We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for coming. First item on the agenda this evening is review and approval of the minutes from the prior meeting. Anybody have any addition or correction? If I have them to lend out, otherwise I'm going to look for a motion to approve.
I will approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
The motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass the minutes. Next item on the agenda, public hearing from Mr. Stroh's request for a conditional use permit for a home brewery. Nancy, do you have any additional details before we begin?
Well, if you'd like me to just summarize a couple of staff comments. So, just as a follow-up, there will also need to be a hearing on the license wherein the process of trying to update our ordinance, which hadn't included a small brewer off sale. So, no matter how this proceeds, we're going to be broadening our alcohol ordinance to include some of the things that have come through the state recently. So, we're going to do that. And just as a reminder, should the brewery can move forward, there are certainly other authorities that will need to be complied with as listed there. But consideration according to your comprehensive plan, it's quite a residential area, even though the use is, you know, the use is a consideration in that area. But if you look at your proposed future land use, it's changed all of that area north of downtown to low-density residential. And I don't know if that has any impact on your consideration tonight, but I just wanted to point that out since we're to look at the comprehensive plan. And then I had noted to recommend a waiver of 154.04(c)(2) if you approve the conditional use permit. We have a restriction in there that accessory buildings can only use 50% for a home business. And I think the intent is that they'd want to use all of it. So, I recommended that. And then some of the same things. There will be an investigation on the liquor license, but that is normal. And just suggest that a condition is that it is effective upon the sale of the property and meeting all the other requirements. And then, speaking with the deputy city clerk who licenses the liquor and with Clerk Raffey, it was just suggested to maybe consider more restrictive rules than what the state allows. Right now, they have the authority to operate under those hours listed by the state, and so the city could consider more restrictive. The production level allowed by the state for a small brewer is approximately, if I've done the math right, about 1,800 gallons a month. And I think the suggestion with the proposal is about 1,000. Again, it's your consideration, but that's just doing some of the math. It was recommended that at the site, if they're selling growlers off that property, just post a sign stating that no open containers are allowed on public streets. We do allow them in the park, but not on the public streets. And that no glass containers were allowed in the park. And then, only because we have a 500-foot rule for other alcohol dispensaries, there is a nursery school nearby, but that's still over 700 feet away. So, it's just a consideration. So, the staff have looked at those comments for your consideration tonight.
And you know what hours the state typically allows these types of operations?
Um, I think it's like eight to 10:00 at night, but...
That sounds like what I have.
Yep, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. all day of the week, which is a lot.
Which is far more than...
Even Sunday. So, yeah.
Unless there's any other comments, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anybody have any thoughts they'd like to share on the matter? If they'd be kind enough to come to the podium. And if you would give one of our names and addresses, please.
Scott Stroh, address is 601 Third Avenue Northwest, here in Carson. Be not a whole lot different from a month ago when I was here, but one comment, in the discussion regarding off-sale and such, I'm not looking to run a liquor store in my backyard. That's not my goal here. The primary focus, as I mentioned last time, is distribution to retailers. Really, the only reason I'm looking to at least keep the possibility of an off-sale type option open is for small level. For example, one of my neighbors, when he got the letter and came over to talk, says, "Well, how do I buy your beer?" You know, and so, you know, small level things like that are... It would be the scale I would be interested in. I guess I'm not looking to run a bar or a liquor store in my backyard. I mean, you know, not the focus. But otherwise, wanted to ask you some questions.
Anything you have.
So presently, you're not looking to be opening hours...
Correct.
...right now, but you're asking for that in your conditional use permit?
As an option in the future, an option to at least have future discussions on.
So, would you have any idea what those hours would be?
My... So, initial thoughts would be maybe on weekends when major events are already going on. For example, this last weekend, it was already busy in the neighborhood with the Big Iron Classic there. May have been an opportunity to do something, have something, you know, four or five hours on a day or something like that. And it would be not with no intention of onsite consumption or people walking down the street with an open container or anything. But if somebody wanted to get something to take home with them, it would give them that opportunity.
So, hours you'd be amenable to something like noon to 5:00 or noon to 6:00?
Yep, absolutely. And I'm a teacher by trade, and as long as this is operating on that site, I have no intention of stepping away from that day job. So, it would be minimal at best, especially during the school year.
And how many gallons are you looking to produce on a monthly or whatever basis you're in?
So, initially, typically on a monthly basis, probably in the 100 gallons a month range. Stepping up, probably do a maximum of maybe 300 to 500 gallons in a month.
And then I heard that you're basically looking to brew to sell to other retailers.
Correct.
So, can you describe, you know, you're gonna... How often do you brew and how often do you ship it out over there as a residential area?
Yep, so the initial plan, I'd be brewing probably every other weekend initially, so probably two to four times in a month. The distribution would, I mean, I'd be handling all of it myself, so there's not going to be, you know, shots distributed or semis coming through the neighborhood or anything. Most of that would be handled by me taking a two-wheeled dolly and pulling the, you know, hauling a keg or a case of cans to the back of my truck and driving out from there, so...
And if you get up to 300 to 500 gallons, is that more of that?
That's still essentially the intent. Hopefully, it's just...
Just brew more at one time?
Yep, and hopefully just more cakes to the same person. Hopefully, not more deliveries, just more volume, and not delivery would be the ideal world, just a lot on a person's back.
Okay. And so, from a storage, you really wouldn't be storing any brewed beer?
Right. Ideally, not, ideally, minimal. Ideally, very little.
All right. And then how about the delivery of your raw goods or things that are coming in?
Same thing. At this scale, I'd be driving up to the, driving to the store. There's a place either in Rochester or in the cities where most of the supplies would be coming from, and it'd be in the back of my truck and then schlepping it from the driveway to the shed.
Okay, all right. How big of an operation do you get to where you say, "Okay, it doesn't fit in the shed, and I need to go somewhere else"?
Well, and that's the long-term goal. That's hopefully, this is ideally a two- to five-year goal to be able to establish clients, establish process, you know, establish reputation. And then, in that three-to-five-year range, hopefully then move to something larger. I would still like to keep it in Carson. That would then look more like, you know, the breweries that you like seeing in Rochester and the new one opening up in Oatana. But that jump wouldn't be for several years.
How often?
Sorry, go ahead.
How often are you taking out the spent grain?
So, it would go within, usually within a day or two of brewing, so two to four times a month at that brewing level.
So, between that time, you take it out and get rid of it, what are you keeping it in? Is it sealed container?
The spent grain.
Yes.
Yeah, it'd probably be like 55, those plastic 55-gallon drums.
But they'll be sealed, so deodorant?
Yeah, and they shouldn't, and that's where they'd be gone within a day, because that's about when they start to smell. But the, within that initial day or so, they just smell like bread.
Would you be amenable to running inventory or running production level that could be viewed by the city if, you know, if there was any question?
Yeah, and there would be...
Because we're going to be making some decisions based on volume, right?
Right, yep.
And so, keeping a running log of what your volume is going to be, that if there were any issues that were, that you'd have the documented paperwork to be able to do.
Yeah, and all of that would be documented anyway, because the state and the fed all want those. They want to be able to tax every drop, so...
Have you had any initial conversations with the state or the federal agencies about licensing?
Yep, I've talked to both. Both states, so at the federal level, I called and talked to them, because there were a couple of conditions there that made, that came, that brought up a couple of questions, so I was able to talk to them, and they seemed good with everything. I talked to the state at both the Department of Ag level and the Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement, and there's, they've all said basically, as long as the city okay's it, then it's good. But any, beginning any official processes with them require all of the building and all of the equipment and all of the process to be in place. So, they can't start anything officially with either the federal or the state level until everything's done, basically.
So, with this facility, what are you doing for your sewer and water and electricity, I guess?
Right, and so that is something I'll have to talk to the contractor and figure out with in the building permit process, but it'll, I'll need to be able to tie it into water, sewer, and electric.
Are you looking at running water from your house and running that...
If that's...
Six feet deep to get out to that shed?
Well, and that's what I'm gonna hopefully be able to talk to, talk to with a plumber about. I mean, that's not my area of expertise, and I haven't dealt fully into it, and, you know, I'm not going to pay a plumber to come up with a plan until I know it's pursuable. So, I've been waiting for approvals before going to the next step.
Might want to figure out a rough budget for digging water and sewer in six feet deep is going to be.
Yeah.
Know what that cost is, Tony.
The mop.
There's other ways around it, too, but...
Any more questions?
Are we looking at giving up, if we vote, is it for him to use the shed that he's talking about or just his property in general? So, if he chooses to change the location of what he's doing and says, "Hey, I'm gonna put it in my garage instead of the shed," are we, or are we saying it's for the shed only, and that's what he's asking for?
For what it's worth, I mean, on the garage statement specifically, federal won't approve anything that's attached to the house.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
But I believe the conditional use permit would allow us to set that as a condition if he wanted to.
There'd probably be a lot more people brewing beer in their garage if that was a legal aspect.
Yeah. You'd be surprised how many people...
Well, I meant for distribution, not just for all your neighbors.
The only things they say specifically they won't license is anything attached to your house and a boat.
What if the boat's not attached to the house?
Right.
Well, I'm not going far yet to come up anywhere.
Does anyone else have anything they would like to add? Now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Gentlemen, what are your thoughts?
Are there any certain rules that we need to kind of go through as a general?
On a conditional use permit, I think it's a healthy debate. So, directed to my recollection, there is no farm on which we need to... Variants would be different.
Well, although you need to address those specific conditions.
Yep.
From the back of the, I have some extras if anybody would like them.
I will take the copy.
Those are the specific things you need to address, pretty much just yes or no.
Anybody have copies of these?
Yeah, there's part of the application. Any of them?
No.
Yep, you need it.
I'm reading it.
Reading through these, I don't see that what is being proposed is in conflict with any of the 13 standards here for issuing.
As long as it stays within the range that he's talking?
Yeah, as proposed, yep, that's what I mentioned. I do agree with Nancy that the ordinance 154.84(c)(2) needs to be addressed, but I think it needs to be addressed not only for what is being proposed, but for any home business. I had a grandfather who was a carpenter, ran a cabinet shop out of his shop, and he used 100% of that shop to generate things. So, I think there may be others that are doing that, too. So, I don't, I think that ordinance needs to be revisited, so I think we have to address that. I think, based on what is proposed, I think a condition needs to be based on acquiring a building permit and addressing the water and sewer drainage as he's proposing, continued on getting the appropriate licensure, and eliminating the hours from noon to 6:00 as a suggestion. I think the posting of a sign is a non-issue. I think he can certainly create a sign, and when it, the problem is, is the policing. I mean, once it leaves his property, he can't control that, so we have to understand that he is out of control. And then, the issue of production, he answered my question regarding that, so being able to be able to track that production would be great. So, those are my points.
When you say noon to 6:00, is that when he can, is there a specific activity?
Do the sale of growlers and haulers and the other haulers that...
Those hours are tied to sales, not to when he can actually produce beer?
Yeah.
Question.
Yep.
Can I ask a question of the board? I mean, we've had conditional use permit issues in the past not being followed through. Can we put like a year probation period, have him come back in, and we can check his stats, you know, production, that kind of thing, whether he's, we have any issues with neighbors, having complaints within that year? Just to see how things are going. I'm not cutting you down. It's just the other issues that we've had with other conditional use permits, it'd be nice if we could start having a probation period.
A review process?
Yes. Just to make sure everything is cool, and if it's cool, then move on.
I mean, ultimately, the conditional use is open to review at any time, and if it's not met...
Right, but if we state a certain period of time, it holds more ground, rather than something going out 10, 12, 14 years, and them coming and wanting something else and finding out the original wasn't followed.
Who's the person who goes and reviews the conditional use?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it's a condition that you place on the owner. I think it's the operations that you place on the city that you want to, for review process and...
Okay.
So, I think...
But we'd almost have to have the owner in here so he can show what he's doing for production.
Yeah, and we could do that anytime.
Okay, just asking.
Yeah.
You touched on an interesting point, though, because there's a lot of conditional use permits out there, but frankly, I don't know if we know what the status is in.
No, that's why I'm bringing this. We've got to start somewhere.
Yeah, when we had a zoning administrator, that was their job. No, no, we don't have a zoning administrator, per se. I mean, it's a combination job, but it's not like we have a dedicated individual to do it.
Just asking.
Yep, no, I agree with the premise.
You're trying to protect both sides.
Right.
Trying to do, but ultimately, that's not the...
I'm not harming him. I'm just making sure everything is followed through.
It's probably more of a city thing that they want to release conditional use permits, than they need to start policing all of them.
Yeah.
No, my, I mean, my only concern is the traffic, you know, I mean, the in and out of the sales and that kind of stuff, the people, you know, I mean, if we are going to allow the, you know, off-sale, yeah, and just making sure that that doesn't get to a point where it's excessive. You know, I mean, I get it, I understand, you know, the festival in the parks and those kinds of things. It's, you know, it's a busy time already. Take advantage of it, that's awesome, you know, but it's the, you know, school night at, you know, 9:30 when there's three cars cruising up and down the driveway trying to find your place to buy a growler on a Tuesday. You know, that's my biggest concern with it.
I mean, at this time, are we restricting him to weekends only from that 12 to 6:00 based on what's your, was that your recommendation?
I just thought for the hours, if somebody wants it limited to the weekend, then somebody else can make that suggestion.
Just a thought, about by appointment only, with a limit of one vehicle at a time?
Yep.
That was something I had pondered.
Yep.
Because I don't want 20 cars pulling up at my house at 9:30 on a school night either. I'll be at bed. I think that with the time frame, you know, I think five, you mentioned five earlier, I think that would be too early, because we got people coming back from Rochester and everybody, most places stay until 6:00.
Yeah.
And that gives just enough time for somebody to pick up what they need from various places.
Well, and the other thing, too, and if we're going to approve it, I also don't want to get to the point where we're so restrictive that he can't sell anything. You know, the whole point of allowing him to do this is so that he can sell stuff and grow and move into, you know?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I, that was just my, one of my things that was kind of jumping out of me was the traffic. So, I think the structure and all of that is fine. I think you've got a plan for getting rid of the waste and, you know, and those kinds of things. That sounds like you're on top of all of that, you know, so...
Any other thoughts, sir?
No. You know, I've brewed on the system a few times in his backyard, so I've got a pretty good idea on everything to operate. I don't think it represents any sort of detraction to his neighbors. I don't understand these things well enough to talk about it. It's outside the purview of zoning, but I don't know if there's an opportunity to partner up with a municipal liquor store. You know, we've already got a retail outlet for beer in the city, and I don't know if there's the ability to go in and talk with the folks there, and if you want to candidate, if you want to make growlers available, I don't know what you're getting into there, but there is...
I was certainly hoping that there would be a partnership there.
Okay. That was just one of the thoughts, that way you've got retail traffic going to a no-retail destination for liquor.
Right, and it would be basically just helping you extend your hours that way. And you would, you know, like they touched on earlier, you don't want a bunch of traffic in the neighborhood, right, everybody showing up at 9:00. And if you were to somehow concur a deal on that, I think that would help you out, too. So, my thoughts, sir. Do you have anything there?
I stated what I wanted to say.
Okay, I'm good, okay. Then, gentlemen, I'd look for a motion.
Well, I repeat the conditions that were outlined. Make sure everybody's in agreement with those.
I've got requirement of a building permit. Sign was okay. Limit sales onsite to noon at 6:00. Is there an annual checkup process or annual review that we want to have? And other than that, it just might be a no-time review, I would say. So, I believe those were the conditions that we shared.
And Nancy, you're talking about making sure that we don't can use?
Oh, that was kind of the application itself.
Okay, I'm in touch, okay.
So, giving appropriate licensures, did you have that on there?
For what it's worth, I can't...
Yeah, you can't.
I can't get state or federal licensure until I have a conditional use permit.
You get in a lot of trouble trying to sell without those licenses.
Yeah. So, there's mechanisms in place, we'll make sure those licenses...
All right. And then, the second, giving the second motion to waive the 154.84(c)(2), or can that be part of the same motion, since it's a variance to the ordinance?
Well, you can include it as part of this if it's particular to this, but then you were suggesting maybe addressing it anyway, so we can certainly do that outside of here, so it won't need to be addressed here.
Yeah, if we're within our latitude to recommend waiving that, I would add that to that. So, I'll make a motion to approve based on the conditional warrant.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Conditional use permit has been approved. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, they don't have to...
Next item on the agenda, public hearing, South Fork, Third Preliminary class.
Well, in the past couple of weeks, we've been doing a lot of looking. We reviewed a lot of the original CUP, so this is where much of that came from, and it's a lot of a really good idea to continue. So, we did call upon the zoning consultant to review the documentation that we had for conditional use permit and CUPDs for that area, and they felt that it was still needed for this one. So, if you have other information that differs from that, let us know, but that's what she determined that they would be needed. And then, what came out of the other agreements, which were also recommended by her as well, were updated association documents, again, noting that the infrastructure is maintained, owned and maintained by the association. Capital maintenance account was mentioned in one of the documents, so there would... That is a recommendation to waive our agreements, whatever the commission decides. Supply as builds, I'll have you know that the engineer and the public works director felt like we had the as builds from the previous CUP, so that's this. We just need those for this one. The previous agreements had mentioned that the city will flush the hydrants, but it's not to be intended to serve as the maintenance. The notification of the public works, all the service lines, et cetera, as per city specifications. A curious note that they have suggested changing the street signs to the different colors for the reason noted there. Additionally, there's a storm shelter. Now, I'm not sure what the new homes will be, if they'll have basements or not, but just to verify that appropriate shelter is in place for the entire development as needed. And then, building permits, maybe issue when the streets are certified by the engineer, being capable of supporting construction vehicles. And then, the additional regular things, development agreement, and the attorney's already looking at that. I think you saw the email for the engineer's view, so I will associate it with that. Water access charges, sewer, parkland easements, and public works essentially reaffirming in their comments that just specifically note that they own and maintain the water, sewer, hydrants, street, and subdrains. They added the word subdrains, they particularly wanted to make sure of that. And then, you saw the notes from the city engineer, and the city engineer, I'll point out, had noted that there should be a pond maintenance stream between South Fork and the pond owner, which is not South Fork. And then, a new item that I didn't mention, which is being required by the state on all properties, whether commercial or residential, are the new tracer wire requirements. And so, he's included that as well, too. So, and I have some handouts if anyone needs any of those, but those are the recommendations.
Thank you, ma'am. That said, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you have anything you'd like to share, if you've had enough to give a short name and address, please.
Tony Bigelow, 1210 16th Street Northeast, Casson. Sorry, I've gone. Yeah, I mean, this is seven acres in the middle of South Fork that would've gotten developed, but we kind of had a recession, we held off from doing that. The original phase of South Fork, as many of you probably know, was a manufactured home park, and that was the first 111 lots we put in there. Three years later, we said, mm, it's getting tough, you know, banks won't give money to people, they don't own the lots, et cetera. So, we planted 37 lots in the southeast corner, and that became the first association out there. And then, which, I know you guys got a letter from someone saying, hey, you know, they're bickering at the association meetings, and we gotta take care of these private streets, but I think it's been working out great. It's an avenue for affordable housing. We... I just had an association meeting with the 111 Lot Association, and they were approving new park equipment, having a pretty good meeting, so... I, you know, that's all I really got tonight. I, you know, will comply with all these conditions, and it's pretty straightforward, 28 lots. I'll take any questions.
Where's the retention pond out there? The one that...
It is just...
I'm looking at a map.
Well, we own it. It's on... It's on the, we call it the Hampton 20 Acres, so Manor Blad Avenue straight south, there's 20 acres, straight south of A&amp;A Shop.
Yep.
And the ponds there, with size for all of South Fork and the 20 acres at the time it was installed.
Oh.
So, I think Brandon's gonna review that and make sure it can handle the stormwater.
So, Tony, is the intent that this will be part of the second association, not part of the 111?
No, part of the 111.
Oh, it will be part of the 111?
Yeah, because the roads actually go out onto their existing association already.
Okay.
And they're the... They have the older streets, and they thought, hey, one new street with new people putting money in for our older streets would be great.
Oh, okay.
I only approached that association because there probably is a lot of bickering at the other one. The other one, we haven't owned lots for five, six years, so I haven't... I don't go to their meetings or do any of that. They're on their own.
And those, those and that other, that second one, the 37 or whatever... Are those patio type homes, too, or do they have basements there?
Yeah, so a mix. So, there was a couple mani... One mani... Two manufactured homes in there, one modular on a full basement, one modular on a crawl space, and the rest were built either as patio homes or split levels.
Okay.
We built most all of them.
Okay.
Now, you see, these are all split, so you don't have to worry about the storm shelter thing.
So, the storm shelter owned by the 111 Association, they have converted it into, you know, meeting spaces. I mean, it's still serving the storm shelter for the manufactured homes, but we haven't built a manufactured home out there in a long time, but Homes of Harmony has put up a few. So, really, I have three lots left that could have manufactured homes, so there's plenty of room in the storm shelter at this time.
Have anything more to contribute to the public hearing, sir? I'm good. Now, that will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you.
Do we have the conditions on the first CUP?
Well, actually, tonight is just to approve the preliminary and final class, but you're not to the final class yet, so I just wanted to make you aware of the conditions and whichever of those and/or the engineer comments you want to incorporate, especially in the final class.
So, Nancy, are we basically talking layout kind of tonight? I mean, because I still have to come back for the CUP.
That's right. That's right. So, yeah, that's right.
Other than what's been listed by the, you know, well, listed by the staff, I don't have any additional questions.
Well, it looks good to me.
Yeah, they have the engineering on that a little.
I would like to make a statement, too, that when we put these streets in, they were inspected by the city years ago in 2001, and again, when we did the 37 lots, we used the same water mains, the same everything. Mike Martin called these a substandard street, and that kind of got me in trouble, saying it's a cheaper street out there. It's not. Those streets are in good shape. The sewer and water mains are the same thing we use anywhere in the city, but what he meant by substandard is I'm not meeting the width, the width. I don't have boulevards, I don't have sidewalks. So, and that was the intent of it anyways. I mean, we have a more affordable product. I can sell lots in the high 20s to low 30s instead of the 40s to, and up and up and up, and rest of Casson. Yep. Sorry, just wanted to throw that out there.
Good point.
If there's no more discussion, gentlemen, I'll have a promotion, please.
I'll move to approve the preliminary plot as presented.
I'll second. A motion, have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye, propose. And we're gonna go ahead and push on through and look at the final class as well? Any additional comments?
Only that I particularly... I think a lot of what has been listed in the zoning administrator's comment, or the, excuse me, the staff's comments can be incorporated in the CUP, but with respect to some of the engineer's comments, to maybe include those as recommended because his last line was conditioned upon above being addressed and listed. So, I don't know if that means that the final class has to come back or reconsidered. Not, I mean, the hearing, you don't have to have another hearing, but consider that with the next one, with the tracer wires and all those other technical things.
I think if we just noted that to be included with the engineer's specifications...
Okay.
I think we'd be fine.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
No, forgive me, we need to have a public hearing.
Sorry, Tony.
I tried, Dylan. Go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody has anything more they would like to share.
Tony Bigelow, again, nothing unless you guys have questions.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments?
No.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you, gentlemen, for your follow of the process. If someone would like to make a motion or continue making a motion, restate their motion.
I'll restate the motion. I make a motion to approve the final plot with the conditions that the engineer has stated in his notes.
Do we have a motion? Have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Final class passes as well. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Next up, Dodge County Zoning Ordinance, public hearing.
That was only included in case anyone wanted to go and present, or if you were commissioning any comments you wanted to go share with us. Or can just serve as a notice.
Were there any comments, gentlemen? I've moved outside of our curricula. Does anybody have any comments? Do we have any other business that needs to be discussed, too, then? I'll go ahead and join the meeting. Thank you all for coming.
We need a little more participation in the audience, though.
I'm not here for anything. Did they hit oil land in North Manor really up there?